We call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda approved and we'll go down to announcements. Maybe I'll just start. I'm sitting in council chambers for those who are watching over our live stream. I am however, for the most part alone here. I'm just with our communications lead because it is still illegal in Nova Scotia for municipalities to meet in their council chambers. So I wanted the public to know that that is why I am alone here. So we've made that request a couple of times now. We've made that request to have that changed so that we can meet as a team or at least have the option to meet as a team. So hopefully the next time we have a live council meeting in July, at least more of us will be able to be in council chambers. But I missed this place and that's why I'm here today. Are there any announcements from any members of council? No? We've got a number of grad, class of 2020 events this week. So if you are a student graduating from Parkview, congratulations. And we know that Wednesday you're getting your diploma and going to the school, I guess for potentially the last time to pick that up. And Thursday we have a couple of prom-like events. I don't know what else to call them, but there's some professional photos being done of grads at the LCLC during the day. And in the evening at nine o'clock, there's the grad parade. I don't know what else to call it, where the class of 2020 will kind of parade through the parking lot at the LCLC. And just for the public, that starts at nine, but priority or preference for parking will be given to students, to the family of students because there is limited parking. And that starts at nine. And thank you to all the volunteers who put on all the events for our students. And we have on the agenda today, from the French School, they had a graduation event on Saturday. So, you know, congratulations to them as well. And of course, we don't want to forget NSCC students who graduated, especially from the Lunenburg campus. So congratulations to everybody. Next item is the minutes of June 8th. Regular council meeting are there? Any errors or omissions? No? Okay, so we'll declare the minutes approved and we'll go down to correspondence for action. And this is from Gina Walsh, a parent at Echol de la Rive Sud for requests for funding for a graduation recognition that took place on the weekend. And so what is council's wish for this? Someone prepared to make a motion or someone want to discuss? Discuss this topic?
Oh. I think Michael has his hand up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Michael, yep, sorry.
Yeah, just a comment. In the notes, it says that the Department of Education, they're unable to access any of the funds that they had fundraised for the closing event. So they have the money, they just can't access the money. So why do they need money from the town? Why can't they just let the Best Western, which is 90% of the event, just hold off until they can get paid or get the money out of the schools?
So that's a good question. I didn't understand that either. I know that is, I mean, I can always speak as a parent with student at Parkview, that we got some of the money back that we had paid towards prom. And so I don't understand why this school did not return, what I'm assuming is some of the money that they either fundraised or they paid for this event. And then just I should back up and just say for those, the public watching, that the request has been made for this event for funding of, so what we're suggesting is $500 to the Town of Bridgewater for the students that graduated for this event. The total cost was $1,000. It was at the Best Western. I know Municipal District Lunenburg gave some already. I don't know if the other two councils are giving any. Your point is well taken, Council Graves. I don't know. I don't know if they negotiated that rate or anything. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I guess the other issue, probably along the same lines, is just the proportional amount that we're giving or they've asked for compared to the proportional amount we've given to the large, very large number of Parkview grads. And somehow a way to correlate that would make sense to me a little more logically, I guess.
Yeah, the cost is...
We're giving $500 for nine grads versus 1,500 for...
Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I can make the motion if you wish. I think we should support them. We can support the other schools and the Bridge Water residents, children that's going to that school.
Yeah, you can make the motion and then we can debate the motion once it's on the floor, sure?
Okay, good. I move that Town Council, Town of Bridgewater, award a grant in the amount of $500 as per the request contained in Document 20-120 to the Echol de la Rive Sud, that the town's contribution towards a graduation ceremony recently held.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council McGinnis.
Probably not going to have a vote for it, but I'll second it.
I'm struggling with, I struggle with two things. So the first thing that I always struggle with is being asked after the fact. So this request did come in Friday. And it is disproportionate. So it's about, per student, it's about 10 times more. The cost is 10 times per student more than the event that's taking place at the LCLC. It's unfortunate that they couldn't combine the two. And I am also, you know, quite concerned, to Council Graves' point, that the school has this money that they could have put towards this event and the parents seem unable to access that money. And it sounded like they don't even, they haven't even been able to talk to somebody in order to find out if eventually they're going to access the money. So does that mean the money is gone? Does it mean it goes towards next year's event? Does it mean in September, all the parents are going to get a refund? So there's a whole bunch of questions. Council Graves, you have your hand up.
You answer the question or you talk to the question?
The flip side of what I just said is I don't, I don't want these kids to feel like we don't care about their graduation. For me personally, I mean, I'm going to be supporting the motion, but I feel, I'm supporting it out of the principle that these kids deserved something. They did have the event. Again, would it have been nice to combine it with the Parkview event, to have it at one location with hundreds and hundreds of people watching? I think that would have been really cool, but that ship has sailed. So I don't want, I don't want these kids to feel like they're second class, if you will. But had this come with a few weeks' notice, I probably would have pushed to go after the school and find out where that money is. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
One, I guess, do we know what the municipality gave? And two, do we know what will happen if they get access to the funds that they have fundraised? So in my opinion, it's their money. I don't understand the, why that's not being released that they've fundraised for.
Yeah, so my understanding is Municipal District Lunenburg gave, and Tammy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, about $230. But they have two of the students, I believe, are theirs.
Yeah, they're actually considering it tomorrow at their council meeting, but that's the recommendation.
Mayor Mitchell, I don't seem to have something for, I could raise my hand. So I'll just speak up. Who would pay, if COVID-19 did not happen, who would pay for the graduation ceremonies of Parkview and this school?
So all the students would have paid, they pay for that, they pay into that?
Really? The school board does not pay for the graduation?
No. I don't, I don't know if they pay, if there's a shortfall if they pay. I just know as a, as a parent, I, at the beginning of the year, I paid. I paid for a yearbook, the cap and gown, and towards an event. And it's like, based on this letter, certainly for this particular school, they fundraised for this. Council Thorburn?
Yeah, I just feel we've contributed to one school, had the same circumstances and paid the money upfront, that we should be fair. And the affair thing would be to assist this school as well. So I will be supporting the motion.
Did you put, okay. Now, Council Frasier?
Yeah, I find that a little bit torn here with the circumstances and with pandemic. It's making it difficult. I do see both sides as, you know, trying to play fair to both schools, but I have difficulty with the proportion amount and that they've fundraised. So I am struggling with, you know, what's on the table. But I feel that in the end, we should, I should feel support for them for their unique situation and the circumstances that they're in.
Further discussion?
Ready for the question?
I am ready for the question, yes. Question's being called. All those in favor will go around. Council McGinnis?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yen.
Council Graves?
Oh.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Nay.
And I am in favor, so the motion is carried. And I think it would be good to know, and maybe we can reach out to Ms. Walsh to find out if and when that money is returned to those, to, or where that money goes after they finally get in contact with the schools. Because I'm just very curious. As someone said, that's their money. It's disappointing that you can go towards this event or at least get a refund. At least as a Parkview parent, I got a refund, so. Okay, good discussion. Thank you. Our next item under Reports and Recommendations, 2020 Municipal and CSAP School Board Elections Voting Methods. Lot of information in here. So the last couple of elections in Bridgewater, we've had the option of e-voting and telephone voting. So when I say e-voting, I just want to make it very clear for the public. It's also the ability to vote by telephone. So I know this has a greater impact in rural municipalities where not everyone has internet, but we are talking about voting by computer or using a telephone. And if you look at the numbers, we have seen voter turnout increase by having electronic methods. COVID has obviously thrown a wrench into voter safety. If there's a second wave in the fall, the provinces, at least right now, made it clear that they are moving ahead with the October election. And so they've asked us to figure out a way to make it as safe as possible and proceed with the election in October. And so what's being proposed here is to go strictly with e or telephone voting. And I'll just turn it over to the CAO to perhaps give a little bit more detail.
Yeah, so council, council under the Election Act can set the method of voting. And as was indicated, in the last two elections, council opted to have the advanced polls with e-voting. And the advanced polls went all the way up to the end of, the close of the polls on ordinary closing day, at 7:00 PM on Voting Day. And on Voting Day, you also opted for paper ballots as well. What's being recommended is that we move to an electronic voting method and telephone voting method for ordinary poll days while those are advanced polls. And the rationale for that is that COVID-19 places some restrictions and perhaps difficulties on holding polls and having poll locations within the town. A lot of it has to do with the physical distancing requirements, the cleaning protocols that would be in place for having pencils, touching common surfaces, those things. We'd have to take extra care at the poll stations to make sure there were gloves, pencils, and cleaning methods put in place. We'd also have to have individuals at the stations to make sure physical distancing is where adhered to. And of course, there's just the concern about whether or not people would want to come out to a poll station to vote with those types of restrictions and, I guess, concerns that might exist at that time. And it's really, it's anyone's guess what October is going to look like. But if there is a second wave, then it could definitely impact turnout at the poll stations. Number of municipalities have gotten together to talk about elections, as they do every time just before an election, to go over kind of some tips and suggestions about how we can make the election better each time. And there are a number of municipal units that have opted for e-voting and telephone voting only for both the advanced and the ordinary poll. And the reason for that are ordinary voting day. And the reason for that is simply, just as we said, it's the complications that come along with a possible second wave of COVID-19 and the measures that we would have to put in place to accommodate a traditional poll station with paper ballots. I do have the list that we have acquired in terms of the towns within Nova Scotia thus far that have opted for that, but some of our neighbors have, some of our neighboring towns have done that. And you'll probably see that it'll vary between municipal units. I know some do have concern over internet and the quality of internet, but telephone voting is the other alternative. That's very easy to do as well and doesn't rely on internet strength or signals to do that. So that is the recommendation as before council tonight. The council supports that and we would need a motion to add that.
Thank you. Questions from council? As I said, this is not our first go-around with e-voting. Council Thorburn, I see your hand up.
Yes, Tammy, when I was reading the document, we're going to be charged $2.45 per resident. And that's for every resident in the Town of Bridgewater, whether they vote or not. That seems a little bit expensive to me to click on a ballot to vote.
Last election, our cost, Amanda put a comparison there. To do it the traditional way with both e-voting and paper, we're estimating around $28,000. To do it with the e-voting for advanced poll, which we've done, and I would suggest our voters have become accustomed to, and then having the, and doing e-voting on ordinary poll day too, it's actually a little cheaper because you don't have to hire the poll staff and supply costs are minimal as well because you're not buying ballots. We're not dealing with food costs and all that that goes along with hosting polls.
I understand that, but it still seems a little expensive to push a button, cost you $2.45. That's my point.
That was the rate that was negotiated with HRM, went out and did a proposal call. And a televote was the selected provider, and that was the rate negotiated. And they honored that rate for other municipal units throughout Nova Scotia. It's the best rate.
Would you like a motion, your worship?
Sure.
I move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater use only electronic voting methods, telephone and internet for the 2020 Municipal and CSAP School Board Elections.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Seconding.
Council Graves, further discussion?
Yes, your worship, Council McGinnis here, is anyone that was sitting around the council table in 2016, when we had this discussion, know my feeling on e-voting. And I'm just wondering if a couple of things might have changed. I hope they have. I want to know, how many votes can be made from one computer terminal? Is it one, two, four, five, or six? Last time it was six. And is there any way other than the use of the ID card to identify who is actually voting?
So you're saying last time it was up to six from the same IP address, I think? Yeah, and I don't know about the second part of that. So I don't know, I don't know if that's been changed from six down?
I'd have to, I'd have to confirm that with Amanda, what the details of that are. But each voter is given a unique PIN number, and that's provided by a televote. So that's generated through their system. So we can't tell who votes.
Yeah, the problem is they mail those, they mail those cards out. And sometimes you don't get that destination they should. And some you may find in the lobby of apartment buildings. And ironically enough, I'm going to vote in support of this motion. I just think that e-voting has too many flaws to, to keep from fraud from happening. And many elections, a lot of elections are decided sometimes with less than 10 votes. And so they can be easily influenced. And using e-voting, you can do that quite easily. So I, only because we've had COVID-19 and we don't have any other alternative, I don't think, I will support the motion. But in general, I am totally against e-voting until it gets more, more accurate on knowing who, if they know who is voting and how many times you're voting. So my two cents worth is.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question's being called, so I'll go around the room. Well, I'll go around your rooms. Council McGinnis?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
I am in favor. Motion is carried. And so we'll move from that to the first reading of the proposed alternative voting method. So we have to, we have to go through a couple of readings of this. I'm just waiting to refresh my screen, sorry. Okay, we've kind of already had the discussion on this, unless there's some questions about the next part?
Would you like me to continue on?
Perfect.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the Intended the Proposed Alternative Voting Method Bylaw, as presented in Document 20-019E, and proceed to second and final reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on July 13th, 2020, and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second it, your worship.
Council Thorburn, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. Council McGinnis, yere nae?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor. Motion is carried. I feel like I should be looking around the room as if you're all here. I'll turn your, I'll turn your nameplates around. Next item is the 2020 Elections Advanced and Alternative Voting Dates. So I think the public has figured out by now that there is a municipal election coming up on the 17th of October. And there's of course some, first day of alternate advance voting is October 8th. And then there's, people can vote for the 10 days between the 8th and the 17th. That's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions about that? No questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, your worship.
Thank you, Council Frasier, yes?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater designate October 8th, 2020 as the first day of the alternative advanced voting process and allow electronic voting to be available for 10:00 AM on October 8th, 2020, through to the close of the election at 7:00 PM Atlantic on October 17th, 2020.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Council Graves, any discussion?
Question?
Question being called. Council McGinnis?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am in favor. That's good. That's enough election stuff for now. Next item is Bridgewater Tennis Club Designated Community Project Fund Application. So as we know, the Bridgewater Tennis Club made a presentation to council pre-COVID to talk about work they'd like to do to the courts. In order to do that, they need to, or they'd like to be able to issue tax receipts for donations. And in order to enable that, they would like the donations to be made to the town. Very similar to what we do for HP Studios Fieldhouse, where people make donations to the town. We hold that and then we send it back out, in this case would be to the tennis club. Any questions on that? No? Okay, someone prepared to make a motion?
I can do that.
Thank you.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund, accept the application submitted by the Bridgewater Tennis Club as contained in Document 20-109.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second the motion.
From Council Frasier, thank you. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question being called. Council McGinnis?
Yay.
Council Frasier?
Yay.
Council Thorburn?
Yay.
Council McDonald?
Yay.
Council Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor, thank you. Just trucking rain along here. Next item is the facade improvement program funding for a number of projects, which is great to see. And I'm just trying to talk while my screen loads. Yes, so these came in, so these are being recommended by the downtown advisory committee. I don't know if they have anything they wish to add, our members there, to these? Or if anyone has any questions?
Just a comment.
Sure.
There's about $100,000 worth of renovations. And I think $20,000 on our part is a small price to pay to make the town look good. It's a good investment.
Agreed. And it's nice to see a lot of things happening on King Street. So as everyone looks at the, these addresses, that's, each of those addresses is work being done on a property downtown, investment being put back in. Counsel Thorburn, I see your hand up.
Yes, your worship, although it's not on the motion, but it is in our document, it would be nice to see in the motion, the name at that location, whether it's Vogue or whoever it is. So that the people know where the money's being spent, just not a civic number.
It's the name of the business, so.
Yes.
I'm sure we can do that as long as we, we probably.
If we're allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one problem with that, it's not necessarily the business, it's the, it's the building owner that has made the application.
And it hasn't been identified in the documents.
Yeah, I'm just opening up.
It's all been identified in the documents.
So I'm just opening up the document now, we can, we can go over those and state who the business are. Sorry, my computer's giving me some. Does someone have their doc, if you have the document open, does someone want to review who those are?
I have mine open, your worship.
Sure, if you just want to list the.
509, 511, 513, King Street, formerly occupied Vogue Optical. 517, King Street, Mr. Surplus. And 581 is Speedy Cash.
And 668 is Jack's Burgers and Shakes.
Jack's Burgers and Shakes, Cummings Fire and Safety Building.
Great, so that's good for the public to know. So yes, so great, thanks for sharing that. Other questions about that? Or any questions?
Would you like to have a motion, your worship?
I would, thank you.
I move that town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the downtown plan advisory committee and approve grants for improvements in accordance with policy 96 to the following properties in the amount of $5,000 each. 668 King Street, 509, 511, and 513 King Street, 517 King Street, and 581 King Street.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second that.
I think Deputy Mayor Tanner squeezed in there. Further discussion?
Question.
All right, Counsel McGinnis, yarene?
Yay.
Counsel Fager?
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yay.
Counsel McDonald?
Yay.
Counsel Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am also in favor, thank you. Look forward to seeing the work done. The next item is the building permit report for May 2020. And if you didn't know we were in a pandemic, then one would only have to probably look at the building permit report to see that things have slowed down. I think it is important to note though that, I mean, I think we've all seen the giant crane that's, that's in town. So, so these would have, some of the projects that you see are either in a report that's already come to council or, like, it could have been months and months ago that we've seen, we've seen the permit report. So when I look at the 2020 numbers, it doesn't mean, like, I'm just trying to think of that, that specific project with the crane, I think that came in the, in the 2019.
Actually, the permit just got issued.
Or just got issued, so it hasn't even come yet.
Yeah, the development agreement was last, last year, yeah.
Right. So just, the public might look at the report and say, how can you have a giant crane in town and then your, your building permit report is down so much? So that's, that's kind of why. So that's there. Anyone have any questions on the building permit report? Okay, next one is amendments to policies 18, development agreements and 34, policy 34, public hearing agenda and procedures. So I'm going to turn it over to staff to explain that one a little bit for the public.
Sure. These are just some housekeeping amendments to, so policy 34 is the public hearing and agenda procedures. So that sets out how we hold our public hearings for land use planning matters, development agreements, rezonings, et cetera. And that was just to update it, it hadn't been updated since 2003. And just to reflect changes to position names, some of the terminology and responsibilities. So instead of referring to the developer, we're referring to the applicant because when it's a homeowner and you're calling them a developer, they feel a little uncomfortable and so do we sometimes. And it's just more reflective of what, of who they are. And for development agreement policy number 18, that is to add the authority to execute other instruments as required by the development agreement. So for example, the development agreement may require an easement in favor of the town for services. And so that is so that we do not have to come back to, and we haven't. It's, it's been implicit in the, the motions that council has made to date that by executing the development agreement, you're executing all other instruments associated with that. But it was suggested by our solicitor that we add that line into the motion. And then it's very explicit that permission and approval for those other instruments are, is provided in that single motion.
Okay. Any, any members of council have questions on that? So it should make things a little easier, which is what we want. Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I think Counsel McDonald was first.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the, at the July 13, 2020 council meeting, amendments to policies 18, development agreements, and 34, public hearing agenda and procedures under the Municipal Government Act will be considered.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second the motion.
Counsel Fager, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, Counsel McGinnis? You gotta unmute there.
Yay.
Thank you. Counsel Fager?
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yay.
Counsel McDonald?
Yay.
Counsel Graves? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I'm in favor, thank you. It's great. Next item is recommendation of the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners citizen reappointment. So this is to reappoint Commissioner Virginia Oickel to the, back to the police board for her third term, which ends October 31, 2022. And she has been a real asset on that committee for her time on that, on that board. So we certainly want to keep her on there until the end of her term. Are there any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Certainly.
Okay. I would move that town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners and reappoint Virginia Oickel to the Bridgewater Police Board of Police Commissioners for a third term ending October 31, 2022.
Thank you, seconded by.
Seconded.
Counsel McGinnis? Any discussion? Hearing none, Counsel McGinnis?
Yay.
Counsel Fager?
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yay.
Counsel McDonald?
Yay.
Counsel Graves? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am also in favor, thank you. And we'll let her know, or we'll let, we'll let the chair, Commissioner Walker know. Next item is tender 20-01E wastewater treatment plant digester building roof replacement. So this is just a work in progress, this building. I think, Tammy, did you want to speak to this? Just as the tender came in?
Yeah, sure, Audrey, I see her here as well. So maybe it might be, it might be useful to have Audrey just kind of speak to the results of the tender. And it is over budget, but my understanding is that we put some very expensive equipment in there and did some upgrades within that plant. And to not address the fact that the roof is leaky could compromise the equipment. So there'd have to be money spent on an interim solution if we decided not to award and, and deal with it in the next year's budget. So the recommendation is that we do proceed, but Audrey can review the report and the results of, of the tenders.
Sure, Audrey, if you just want to run us through that pretty quick?
Yep, so we did issue it. We did get a lot of interest, a lot of bidders come to see the site. We did get five submissions and our budget was 75,000. And the lowest bid of the five submissions was 101,261 net HST. We think a lot of it is due to COVID. There's a significant amount of construction work going on and most of the bidders are tied up well into the fall. So that's why you're seeing such high bids. So we wouldn't expect to see much better than that this season unless we went really late.
Questions from council? Counsel Graves? Your microphone's muted.
Yeah, sorry, just in regards to the bids, three of them are really high and then two of them are really low. And I'm just wondering if they understand the work involved? If that makes any sense?
Yep. Yeah, and I understand Kirk did check with the two low bidders. They are well versed in what happened and both very reputable companies. But the three that you see that are really high are tied up even later than the fall. So the only reason they put it in was they would have to get other help to get it done.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, that was my question. A lot, a lot of times if you don't really need the work, you put a high price and then they take it, you get it. So I'm surprised, but I think that's a sign of the future. Probably all of our tenders could go up by 15% or 20% because that's the way it is.
And it's something we also saw after the 2008, 2009 economic crisis was when stimulus funding was placed into the economy to kickstart the economy. The price of tenders went up because a lot of companies knew they could access federal money for projects and there was a lot of work to go around. So it drove the price up. So it wouldn't surprise me if we're, we're in this for some time. Further questions? Yes, please.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award tender 20-01E wastewater treatment plant digester building roof replacement to 3296151 Nova Scotia Limited Metro Roofing for a total price of 101,664, including HST 101,261.71 net HST.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second that, your worship.
Counsel Thorburn, further discussion?
Question.
Question being called, Counsel McGinnis?
Yay.
Counsel Fager?
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yay.
Counsel McDonald?
Yay.
Counsel Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
And I am also in favor, thank you, motion is carried. We'll go to the next item, which is the RFP 2020-02 Supply and Delivery of Flow Monitoring Equipment. And this probably sounds like something Audrey's going to guide us through as well.
Okay, so this is the flow monitoring equipment for our inflow infiltration project. It is a total of seven flow loggers. We had an original budget of 150,000. We did get a lot of interest, but we actually only had two official proposals and only one of those actually qualified to be the type of flow logger that we wish to have. So we are looking at a budget price of 124,772.06 net HST. That gets us flow loggers that we will put throughout town. We'll use it to basically guide us through our flow monitoring and we can get those installed basically in the next couple of weeks. And they'll be in for our fall storms and be able to capture even the dry weather for us.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Wow, great. Questions from anyone on council? Someone prepared to give us a motion?
I will, your worship.
Thank you.
I would move that town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award RFP 20-02 Supply and Delivery of Flow Monitor Equipment to Biomax Environmental at cost of 137,590.60, including HST 124,772.06 net HST.
Thank you, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Counsel Graves, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, Counsel McGinnis?
Yay.
Counsel Fager?
Yay.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yay.
Counsel McDonald?
Yay.
Counsel Graves?
Yay.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yay.
Also in favor, so motion is carried, thank you. Next item is North Parkade Improvements in Downtown Parking Study. Okay, I think I'm gonna, I think we're going to turn this over to Matt to run us through some of this, or Tammy. You both get to tag team on this one.
Yeah, Matt will go first.
All right. Yeah, I always speak maybe too much. Hopefully you've had a chance to read the port and the details within, and I'll quickly go over it. So I know that the last time we spoke about this formally was back in March 16 with my last memo. And the, I guess, the understanding there that they want us staff to go, we want us staff to go back and look at the life expectancy of the steel structure before council would make any kind of investment into the project. I think through the budgeting process, it was kind of, an update was given informally. But just in the second paragraph, we did call contact the consultant who did the last assessment. And they did report that the steel structure under the concrete, concrete deck is in fairly good condition and would estimate the life expectancy after replacing the concrete deck in year 10 would be another 25 years. There's obvious, obvious caveats, but he did say that the, we would need to complete the recommended maintenance and inspections, paying particular attention to the columns that were located close to the water. All of that we would have, or have budgeted for in future operational budgets to do. Understanding that council approved the budget in April 27. However, council asked kind of have a second look at most of the projects prior to starting them, just in case, but because of the, these financial circumstances around COVID. So, and I know that we've been doing that through capital reports. And I believe in, in May and June, the North Parkade and the Downtown Parking Study, which was added through the budgeting process, have come up. And staff have noted some concern with doing those projects because they are intertwined along with phase three of the downtown improvements. So I guess to, to keep it short and simple, staff have given their opinion in terms of that prior to completing any repairs to the North Parkade, as well as the phase three of the downtown plan, that we determine that the parkade is integral to the downs, the success of the downtown. So we envision that a needs assessment of the parkade would be one of the main objectives of the downtown parking study. Further to that, that the parking study that is planning, planned for this year would be very challenging under the current circumstances around the health crisis and the socio-economic impacts that possibly fell for months or years based on what the news has said. So we're, staff are a little concerned about the validity of any recommendations, understanding that assumptions aren't made when reports are done. But given the circumstances, maybe too many assumptions would be done, especially with the high vacancy of the downtown, although you did talk about the facade program, which is great. So hopefully that does help. So staff would make the suggestion or recommendation that we hold off the parking study until next fiscal year. And then the improvements to the North Parkade or its demolition that would be scheduled for following years in order earlier than '22, '23. I do note, I kind of just cut and paste the last, my last memo in case it comes up. Under financial implications, there is the projects listed from the approved capital project, capital budget there for 2021, which is the railing improvements, as well as the aesthetic improvements that were planned this year. And then the parking study, which was planned this year, or which was an addition. And then in 20, and then we have the phase three, streetscape improvements as well, would be scheduled to be completed in 2021 and 2022. The, I also listed or repeated what the investment, which would have, have to happen in the sub, next 10 years, just with operate, with the annual maintenance program. So a lot of it is, is repeats. So for a number of years, we'll go through $10,000 a year for modern maintenance. Then we do an assessment and some more repairs in 2024. modern maintenance. Then we do an assessment and some more repairs in twenty-twenty-four. Then another three years of ten thousand dollars per year for modern maintenance. And then twenty-twenty-nine, we would do the deck repairs. Although we did note that in twenty-twenty-nine, the deck, concrete deck would be replaced. That could be either that year in, in, in replace of or in lieu of the thirty-five thousand, or be completed the following year in twenty-thirty. And then we did note if they, those above costs don't reflect any aesthetic improvements, especially the membrane that would, would go on. So you'd have to add fifty thousand dollars per, per year. And I did give some reasoning behind that of paying a higher premium for patchwork. It's the best staff could do at this time. I believe that covers the highlights. Your turn, Tammy.
So I think one of the main questions for council is, is if we do the parking study and it comes back and indicates that there's no demand or need for the parking spaces that are in the parcade that we could do without. And understanding that in the next ten years after this investment of, which are aesthetic investments, really, the, the railing and the electrical of a hundred and ten and the aesthetic improvements of a hundred and ninety thousand on the deck. And then after that, it's a small amount each year. Would you, would you, if the parking study came back, be looking to demolish the parcade? And if you wouldn't, then you may want to consider looking at those, those improvements. It's, it's really a question of how much that parking study would influence your direction with that parcade over the next ten years.
Questions from council? It's, I laughed too, with that little nervous, not kind of awkward laugh. For me, when I look at this and I look at the, the impact of COVID has impacted the businesses downtown, the changing landscape of retail just in the world, which I actually believe will shift back in a positive way to local business. I had an interesting conversation with a couple of local merchants last week, who said they now have some sales, like they're doing Christmas level sales because people are, they're shopping local now. They're returning to the stores. Now there's been, it's been a long time since they've been able to be in stores, but they're returning to stores and they're spending money. And I think a lot of it is, you know, local businesses treat their employees well and they're, they employ people in our community. So they want, they want to keep that money local. And I think the other thing for me in terms of the parking study is, as was noted, we just approved a whole bunch of money for facade program going into buildings that are going to add, you know, dozens of people living, literally living on King Street, plus the businesses that are going to go into the main floors of these. We've got the old Rofe building that is, you know, close to completion that we know is, is offices. So you're going to require parking for offices and so on. And that if you did the study today, it would say that you don't have a great deal of need for this. And if we made a decision, for me, if I made a decision based on a report that came out in the next couple of months, based on information they collect today in downtown Bridgewater, it's not reflective of twenty-twenty-one in downtown Bridgewater or twenty-twenty-two. So that's just my, my two cents. Counselor Thorburn, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, your worship. I think we're going to continue to do the maintenance. I heard Tammy say of ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that's going to get done anyway. And I, I do believe that based on the last study that I can remember, that we will need that parking there. So I don't think that we'll see that gone personally with the growth that we have down there with the, especially with the Black Seal development that's coming down there. And, and I think we should go forward, even with doing the cosmetic work this year, because it's the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. And it's in this year's budget to do it. So I would support a motion to get it done. My two cents, worship.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion? Counselor Graves has his hand up. And then Counselor McGuinness?
I agree with Wayne. I can't see the, the parcade ever not being needed. I, I think it's just too valuable. And, you know, I was looking at it last week and it was pretty full. I forget what day it was, but I was certainly going to send comment to, to the rest of council, just to, just to say if you're in the area, drive by that parcade. It was probably forty percent full, which is, you know, pretty good, I think, for, for this time, time of year and, you know, under the circumstances. I think we should get the work done.
Counselor McGuinness?
Yeah, I tend to agree. I'm not going to repeat what Counselor Graves and Thorburn just indicate, because they're my thoughts exactly. If you hope to revive downtown, you're going to need an abundance of parking. And so I, and with all the new work that is being done down there, I think that's going to attract some more businesses on the ground floor of those buildings. So I, I, I think we should go ahead. I would, I would be very, very likely to move in the direction of eliminating that parcade at this time.
I agree.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Sorry, so I'm a little confused. So what are we going to spend this year?
The capital budget has, in the, in the budget, the electrical and cedar railing improvements for a hundred and ten thousand.
Right.
And that's going to have a forty, five forty amp plugs and replace the existing railing, wooden railing system. And then the aesthetic improvements to the deck that were requested, and that was a hundred and ninety thousand. And then, then every year we'd have maintenance on top of that, which is noted there in the report as well. So, but this year it was the hundred and ten and the hundred and ninety, let's be honest.
So, yeah, so I, I get that, I guess. Does it make sense to do any of the, the plug replacement, given that we literally will have no events until spring of twenty-twenty-one? Which is, I think, the purpose of the plug?
See me put it into next year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you're going to do it next year probably anyway, but I guess, you know, if we want to save a few bucks this year, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but.
Yeah, that, that project was, the reason it's in this year's budget is because it was originally planned for last year. And remember, we were over budget. So we just pushed it off. So it, you could, you don't have to do it this year. You could move the railing and the electrical out of here.
Counselor Fager?
Yes, I just think it makes sense to have the parking study done first before we spent significant dollars. I agree with the regular maintenance part of it, but just as far as doing any additional repairs, I think the parking study should come first. My view.
Thank you. Counselor Thorburn?
Yeah, I just feel if we hold off that electrical for another year, it's just going to increase the place that much more. We're going to be working on it now, doing the other, replacing the boards and whatnot. We might as well get the job done and then it's behind us. And, and we know what it is. So it's just my view.
Fair point.
Your, your worship, Counselor McGuinness here. The parking study, is that going to take into consideration that if you did take down the parcade, would there be street parking available on that side?
So that's a good question. It would, it would require it to take into account that removal of any parking might necessitate the need for some parking.
Yeah. And I'm not too sure, Matt, what's, what's left of that, of the, I guess, bank or side that you could put parking on when you take the parcade off? Like how much is on land and how much is suspended right now?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay? Just to make sure?
Yep.
Yep. Good, thanks. While I haven't had the experience or the involvement in the previous parking studies, certainly I would think that there would be an analysis, analysis done, determine how many parking spots we need, what we have existing minus the parcade and where, where those ones would need to be made, made up, so to speak. I do believe in the last parking study, they had noted, I guess, less than fifty percent, we'll say for the, the, the parcade that was tore down and they're averaging around two-thirds, I think, or seventy-five percent for the, for the North Parcade. So I believe that there was the requirement for the parcade, but with the, the landscape as it is, the need for on-street parking or the availability, that would have to be part of it, that would be looked at.
Thank you. Counselor McDonald?
I just, on the electrical, I'd like to see it done this season. That way we're not doing it during, oops, sorry, during the event season next year. It'll be done before we're trying to hold events and things won't be kind of in process during some of the, the events, hopefully that we're having next year.
Thank you. Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, I, I just feel if we want to get rid of a parking lot, I mentioned before about the O'Neill parking lot, that's costing us a fair amount of money each year. So we really, if we want to look at eliminating one, that would be a good choice to eliminate, but certainly not the North Parcade. We need it.
So to me, that's, that's where I feel the parking study is going to, going to highlight things for us is, I, I guess in my head, the last parking study showed that if you removed the South Parcade, you still needed the North Parcade.
Yeah.
And I don't think a lot has changed. Yes, we've had a few businesses move off of King Street, but as we've also seen in the last twelve months, in the last eighteen months, we've had a lot of those buildings change hands. If you walk down the street from Dufferin all the way to Victoria Road, you've got new businesses or you have businesses that just, or buildings rather, that just changed hands. I'm trying to think of, right? You've got the Bank Montreal Building. We just finished the, passing that through council. You've got five seventeen, which is the old classics. That's got work being done to it right now. Facade program just came in for the old Vogue. Got the Rofe building and Gauze Furniture, both being worked on right now. And you've got expansion at Furkenstein. Jax just put in for facade. And then you've got the Old Tavern, which also just changed hands. So to me, it was, the parking study, I think, is, is, I can't imagine it's going to say the parcade can come down. I think if anything, it's going to say you need maybe some additional parking or don't get rid of the O'Neill lot or, or something. So I guess the question for council is, to show, to Counselor Fager's point, if you, if you're confident that, that parcade can't be removed, then you can probably confidently go ahead and put money into it. But if you, if you worry that the parking study is going to say the first thing that should go is the parcade, then I think you're a hundred percent right. You shouldn't be putting any money into the parcade. And I think I've heard both sides. For me, I'm confident that it's not going to be take down the parcade. It's going to be do this with the O'Neill lot or something else. That's my two cents. Deputy Mayor Tanner, you had your hand up first?
So unfortunately, I'm still slightly confused. I know it's easy for me to be slightly confused, but the motion seems to indicate going with option three, or suggests often three. But option three, the way it's worded at least, seems to be we're not spending any money.
You would be doing the traffic study next year and construction, I believe, the year after that. So, sorry, the parking study in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah.
Year. Yeah. And then the improvements would be in twenty-two, twenty-three. So...
So the, so I, just so I'm clear, the, the electrical and cedar railing and aesthetic improvements would not be done this fiscal?
They would be done in twenty-two, twenty-three if, if you were to accept the recommendation in the report.
Yeah, okay. So I, I guess if I'm, I'm a little unclear. I'm clear now, but I'm wondering if everybody else is clear in what we're, the motion, what the motion is suggesting.
Yeah, I, I'm clear what it's suggesting, but I'm, I'm prepared to change that so that that's get done this year. Based on what we've, discussion we've taken place, and I can change that motion to reflect what we're all talking about, if that's the mayor's wish.
Counselor Fager, I think she had her hand up. Next?
Yeah, mine was similar to Deputy Mayor Tanner's question. It was clarity around the motion and the timing of the repairs. So it did get answered.
So it, it comes back to which is the cart and which is the horse?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
If I may, you have a very significant plot of the largest financial institution in the town of Bridgewater and King Street that relies upon that parking.
Yeah.
I'd be really, really likely to remove that part.
I think, and, and for me, if I look ahead ten years, I'm probably more inclined to make a decision before the next batch of, like, millions has to go into this parcade. We just, we literally just spent a boatload of money bringing this, this parcade up to a, a level that we could put people on it. It wasn't that long ago where you couldn't have people on the parcade for events. Should clarify that, for events. And so I, I can't imagine, again, I'm just speaking for myself, I can't imagine in the next ten years removing it. But I can imagine in ten years, having a conversation of, you know what, more people are walking, active transportation is a bigger part, people are biking everywhere. We don't need anywhere near the parking because it's been a shift in mindset. But for me, it's, I think, right now, we just spend a lot of money. I, it looks horrible.
Yeah, your, your worship, I, I guess I'm okay with doing the parking study next year. I don't have a problem with it. But I can word that motion to reflect the intent of doing the rest of the repairs this year, if that's what you wish.
I think we'd still need to kind of maybe have a little bit more of the discussion before.
Go for it.
Deputy Mayor Tanner's got his hands up?
I, I just want to be a hundred percent clear. So it's about a three hundred thousand dollar investment if we do what, what some are suggesting for repairs and so on. And based on bids coming back, it's probably going to be a bit more than that, I assume. You know, if we think about the way bids have been trending, it might be three twenty, perhaps. So we're, yeah, okay.
Yep. It could, it could be cost prohibitive. Counselor Fager?
Yeah, similar to that. I, I know all our quotes have a contingency built into them. And is it, is it ten percent, fifteen percent? Just concerned for, you don't want to be in the same predicament as last year with, with the overage and not being able to fulfill projects of the North Parcade because they were over budget. So I'm just concerned a bit about the estimates and not going over.
No, very, very fair question. Counselor Graves?
Yeah, I, as I said earlier, I can't imagine us not needing the, the North Parcade at all. Also, if, if it is a budgeted item, and if the, if the cost is too high, then you just, you know, postpone it till next year. But let's get it out there and see, see what the market says.
Yeah. So that's the other piece of this to remember is, is if council wants to move ahead with the work this year, it doesn't mean that the work gets approved. Do you know what I mean? Like it, it has to go out for tender and it would have to come back. And if it came back and it was not something that was palatable for us, then, then we would be, if it's over budget, that we don't have to accept it.
Exactly.
Counselor Thorburn?
Yes, your worship. The, the budget that we're talking about was in the budget, was approved by council. So we're just trying to give some direction to proceed or not proceed. So we've, we've already approved that amount in the budget.
Yeah, I think the, the intent, the direction from council was to, previously, previously was to do the parking study prior to a decision on that. So as long as it's clear that you're happy to proceed without the parking study, then, then staff can do that.
Okay, Counselor Fager?
Just curious what staff's opinion would be with us in timing and putting the tender out. Are we, knowing that a lot of contractors are busy, just wondering, just their opinion as to whether they feel that we're, we're going to be successful in getting it done this year? We're into the fall. Just, just wanted staff's opinion on that.
I think we, staff would be successful in the, I think the, the electrical and cedar railing improvements is probably more straightforward of the two projects. The aesthetic improvements with the deck repairs and restoration, that is a, we'll say a two-parter, a two-phase project. You need to fix the deck first and we would need to get that out, then the, then the coating on it. So I, I would certainly have some concern over the aesthetic improvements, but I'm very conservative by nature. So that would be my opinion on that matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Uh, just a quick question for Matt, perhaps. Are these going to be two separate tenders or one all-inclusive tender?
Uh, we we haven't had that discussion in-house yet, but I would suspect that those, because of the variety of work, that we'd have them separate. In my experience, lumping them all together means a general and increased fees. So you try to hire or individually tender it for specialities.
Council Graves?
So another question for Matt. With the expertise we have for electrical in the town of Bridgewater, is it possible to do that in-house, the electrical component?
I get more questions than I'm used to. I I would have to speak with Graham and Kirk and Andrew on that as well as Larry to see if we can do that. I know that there might have already been discussions on that one, but that would have to be confirmed. And I would say that certainly if we had the expertise in the and the, I guess, the resource, human resources there to do that and do it within budget or under, we would, staff would certainly make that recommendation. But I'd have to speak to Larry more on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I almost forgot my question. So how do we protect ourselves from a tender that we're going to award for this potentially award for this project? But then halfway through the project, they say it's going to be $75,000 over budget. Is this a project that is an ideal candidate for, like, this is the price? Some kind of penalty clause for either going over time or going over budget, something like that? I don't know who I'm asking, Tammy or or Pat?
I don't know if the if the price warrants a penalty clause simply because you're going to pay more for that if they're over for time, right, given given the amount, especially if we separate them out and do 110,000 for railings.
And maybe it's not that complex, so it's it's something that, you know, it's X number of pieces of lumber times X number of hours to install it, but you know what I mean? I'd hate to award it. I'm tired of awarding things and they say, this is the price, great job. And then halfway through the job, they say it's now going to be twice as much.
Yeah, well, I know, Matt, when you got the the cost for doing the decking, the aesthetic decking stuff, that was based on research that was done, that Justin had done, talking to a company. Now, how much has COVID-19 affected that? We don't know. And the railings were based on our experience last year with tenders. And again, you'll be, we'll know when the tender price comes in, but they usually do a unit costing. And any change orders require approval. They're small, like, project, I don't know if they'd come in double that amount. They might, we'd build a contingency into the budget, but do you anticipate that there would be unforeseen with this type of project, Matt, that you wouldn't know upfront?
I, yeah, Mike's still on. Again, coming back to just based on my experience, the electrical and cedar railings is, it it I think we all would be comfortable in understanding what the 40, the the five plugs needed in the the wooden railing. So it isn't a project that I would see as a lot of unforeseen unless, you know, we we want to look at a number of options for and however, you know, for the cedar railing. The aesthetic improvements, again, I keep coming back to is that's all subject to, you know, the the condition of the deck and how much you have to tear out. So if you're paying per square foot and they have to remove more than than what that staff anticipated or estimated in the the 84,000, that's probably where I would see the cost go up. In terms of the the coating, it is something fairly new to to Bridgewater. So you're probably, you're not getting a local company to do that. You're probably getting somebody from Halifax or beyond. So to come here to do that work, there could be an increased cost for that. I guess the the saving grace is that we do have a budget number. So if it was, we will find out hopefully early on in the tendering process with, if we're on budget or anywhere near it. Because there would be, you know, there would be, you know, the standard 10% inside of that budget. You would expect to, you know, fluctuate.
And I think that it probably answers your question there, Council Fager, about the contingency, that 10% that's in there. Other questions? I'll get you to refresh your eScribe, too. There's a second motion below there as an option. Not uneasy, this Parkade is never easy for us. What is council's wish? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Do you need more information? Other questions?
Oh, I'll make a motion. I'm not sure it's going to fly, but we'll see.
All right.
I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and proceed with option three in document 20-117 and complete the parking study next fiscal year 2021, 22, and complete any required North Parkade improvements in subsequent fiscal years 2022, 2023 at the earliest.
Do we have a seconder? Is anyone prepared to second that? I'll ask one more time if anyone's prepared to second that motion. No, okay. Is anyone else prepared to make a motion? Or do we need more information or more time? Council Thorburn, you're. Okay, sorry, Council Graves?
I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater proceed with the North Parkade improvements in 2020, 2021, and complete the parking survey next next fiscal year.
Do we have seconder?
I'll second that motion.
Council Thorburn, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing done. Questions being called? Council McGuinness, hear nay? Sorry, was that yea?
Yes, it was, yea.
Okay, sorry, Council Fager?
Yea.
Council Thorburn?
Yea.
Council McDonald?
Yea.
Council Graves?
Yea.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Nay.
And I am in favor. So motion is carried, so we'll do the improvements this year, the parking, the overall parking study next year. And this will come, this will go out to tender and come back. And so council will have the opportunity to review it. And if it's not palatable due to being outside of the budget amount, then we can make that decision when it comes back. Thank you, everybody. Our next item is co-application to FCM and with Clean Foundation for the PACE program improvement. And I see Greg's been waiting patiently on the online with us, so I'll turn that over to staff.
Great, good evening, folks. I hope this one's a little bit easier than the last one, but it's to be seen. So, yeah, I'm just going to provide a quick overview of the the FCM Green Municipal Fund opportunity at hand, which which we made a recommendation for, and then have it handed over to Tammy for some additional comments. Um, so so I guess just kicking things off a little bit of background of how PACE has been used and where we see its its place for the Energize Bridgewater project going forward. So PACE financing has been used since 2015, and and staff does believe that the financing, PACE financing is an accessible financing solution for property owners. However, there, the town's current PACE program does have some deficiencies, which really prevents it from adequately scaling to to support both our community energy investment plan as well as our Energy Poverty Reduction Program, you know, Energize Bridgewater at large. And these deficiencies were outlined in a council report in 2019 last year. So FCM did recently put out three calls for proposal. The first one due, there was an extension. It was originally due the end of June, and now it is July 14th. Subsequent one due the end of September, and finally, another one due in in sometime in in winter. No date has been selected yet. So the the town does believe that we're eligible for the first two calls for funding, the first, which we would use to resolve known program deficiencies, and the second to pilot PACE for a broader range of archetypes, like multi-unit residential buildings. Staff did reference PACE in the Town Smart Cities application to Infrastructure Canada, but it was not included as a line item per se in the economic model that we pitched to Infrastructure Canada, although low interest financing was and is required to capitalize our home energy management system. And staff always conceived PACE to be a suitable fit for that low interest mechanism. That would be paired with other supporting layers of funding and financing as a means to present turnkey value propositions to homeowners. So the new funding opportunity resolves known deficiencies and makes PACE more attractive for homeowners entering the Energy Poverty Reduction Program and the broader community through the grant portion of the funds. There's a loan portion and a grant portion of of up to 50% of the loan portion. So the grant portion can be used to to improve uptake and incentivize deeper retrofits through subsidized capital costs, waived administration fees, improved marketing. There is also the introduction, a required introduction of a loan loss reserve fund. So FCM is requiring that you build that into your application. But that's, that that allows us to further de-risk the investment. So not only is there a lien on the property, there's also a loan loss reserve fund as well if if payments default. In addition, the loan loss reserve fund can be held in an interest earning account. You know, and that that interest earned on the account could potentially be used to cover early repayments that that the town would otherwise be on the hook for. So there's there's that as a benefit as well. And we anticipated that it will resolve our debt service coverage ratio concerns, although, you know, we are waiting for Municipal Affairs to confirm this. There is a meeting tentatively booked for 3:00 PM tomorrow with Municipal Affairs and Department of Energy to hopefully finally figure out the debt service coverage ratio concerns that that essentially need to be addressed before before we we pull the trigger on on this application, as well as short-term borrowing implications that may arise from from this recapitalized stream of of PACE financing. So so, you know, staff discussed and explored, so there's still some some, you know, things that need to be flushed out, but we we intend to do that before submitting the application. And that's why there's kind of a caveat to their staff recommendation. In regards to co-applying with Clean, staff did discuss and explore opportunities to co-admit an application with other partners, but suggest that Clean Foundation is the preferred choice due to a number of reasons that's captured in in the in the reports, including capacity expertise. It builds off, you know, marketing collaboration efforts, et cetera. Now, there are a couple of risks also identified there. I guess the biggest one being, we still need to, I guess, this four-year funding from FCM does not line up with our contract with Clean. Our contract with Clean expires in September 30th, 2022. So we would need to amend and extend extend that contract. And and that's also one of the options in 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 the staff report to council. Yeah, so that's all I have to say about it. Happy to answer any questions and and hand it off to Tammy. I think you would want to make some additional comments, Tammy.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, so understanding that there is a deadline or a timeline for which we have to have the application in by, which I think is July 14th. And as Greg mentioned, there are a few few things that need to be determined. But one one that's perhaps of significance to the town is the impact of borrowing for PACE. So when we provide a loan to the ratepayer through the PACE bylaw, we borrow for that. Now, we can borrow from reserves for a small amount and then pay that back, but we're talking about 130 homes a year, so we're talking 1.3 million. So this FCM money would be a loan, and it would run through the municipal finance corp. So what that means is that the way it's set up right now is that that would impact our debt service ratio. And that would take from capacity from projects that we have on the go. Now, your debt service ratio is based on tax revenue and a certain percentage of that. So that as your tax base grows, your ratio gets better, assuming your debt doesn't increase. So there there might be a little bit of movement in there. But the one that's really of concern at this point, at least to staff, is the operating debt ratio as well. So the municipal government act states that we can borrow up to 50% of our tax revenue in any given year. So I call that short-term borrowing. And we do that to fund projects until they're completed, and then we lock in long-term borrowing. And we just committed to some significant capital to do with our business park improvements in in the interchange area to look at expansion to our park. And so in the next two years, we're going to be looking at 8.4, so 4.2 million a year, plus our sewer projects. So if we do a $2.5 million sewer project, we're short-term borrowing for some of that until it's finished, and then we lock that in. So when Kim looked at this and believe, talked to Greg about it, too, so he's aware of this as well, there was some concern that we could be reaching that that the max on our 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 short-term or operating, I guess, debt in any given year for the next couple of years anyway, as we do some of these big projects. And and this program could take up some of that space that we need because it is borrowing that we have to do. So Leon's met with a panel of of MLAs or ministers, and he's met with the Municipal Affairs staff, other staff, Jessica. We've had discussions with it as well. I think the mayor also talked to our MLA about it. And we indicated to Municipal Affairs that when you have a guaranteed source to be coming in behind it to pay that debt, which is the lien on the property, that it shouldn't necessarily impact your debt service ratio, the same as debt would be for something else like a sewer plant or a road improvement or something like that. And they know the concern, and they know that it's a barrier to the PACE program. If we're talking large-scale of PACE programs, not not 10,000 here or there, but we're talking millions of dollars. And and it's a, it's a big part of our Energize Bridgewater work and one way to for us to look at reducing energy consumption and and having, you know, overall reducing the energy poverty piece. That's a huge component of it, and it's a barrier right now. But but staff would have concerns with going in to apply for a program if it can't be confirmed that the debt service ratio or our operating debt ratio won't be impacted negatively, to the point that it could, it could prohibit us from doing some of the capital that we need to do. Or an alternative would be that if we can't get that finalized by July 14th, which I do have concerns with being able to change that because when Municipal Affairs looks at this, they're going to look at it for more than just the town of Bridgewater. They're going to be looking at all the other municipalities, you know, that might have manfills and tip fees or, you know, other sources of revenue to offset debt. So it's not just a PACE bylaw issue. And I do have concerns about having an answer by July 14th. So if there isn't an answer, at least having confirmed that there's an offer in that application process so that we don't commit the town to to this $5 or $6 million of borrowing and find out that we're going to be in a bad spot.
Thank you, Tammy. Yeah, so it also means we have to continue doing some work with our provincial colleagues. Because I think I think either way, you actually both explained it is fantastic. So you've got a guaranteed source of revenue to offset the loan amount. So why is it being used as a negative against us in terms of our debt service ratio? Like, for PACE, it doesn't make any sense. So I know you need to kind of know by July 14th, but I'm hoping that we can get an answer before that. It's just not logical to me. Questions from council? Council Thorburn?
Yeah, my document shows that that could be anywhere from between $5 and $6 million over a four-year time span. Is that correct, Tammy? Yeah, okay, thanks.
130 homes a year is a lot of homes, but that's a lot of people coming out of energy poverty, which is what, that's what we want, right? That's the goal. Council Graves?
Surely the government would see that, right? Like, it's it's just, it's too good. 130 houses is a is a heck of a lot, you're right. And it would be a shame if that's held up. It would just be a shame who was held up. It doesn't, I agree, it doesn't make sense.
And you said there's a meeting tomorrow, again, with Municipal Affairs and who minds an energy? an energy to?
That's, that's correct. So it's director level staff at municipal affairs as well as our representative and with director level staff at Department of Energy. And Department of Energy, this is a priority for Department of Energy, so they've been telling us that, you know, they'll lobby hard to, to kind of get the thumbs up from municipal affairs. But to Tammy's point, you know, this is something that, that we've been trying to, to change for a number of years now with, with, you know, yeah, and then just haven't been able to do it. So I think that, you know, in addition to the lien on the property, there's also this loan loss reserve fund. So I'm hoping that that further de-risks the investment and municipal affairs might have a different view on it with both the lien on the property and the loan loss reserve fund, you know, and because it's a provincial priority that may work to our advantage as well.
Great. Any further questions? Not hearing any. Someone prepared to make a motion, please?
I guess I will, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Thorburn.
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to enter into a partnership with Clean Foundation to submit two separate applications to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, CFM, the Green Municipal Fund, Community Efficiency Planning Program and funding towards recapitalization and de-risking of the town's PACE program and improving its alignment with the Energy Poverty Reduction Program, conditional upon the satisfactory resolution of long-term and short-term borrowing implications.
Thank you. Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Deputy Mayor Tanner, any further discussion? We've had a good one. Ready for the question?
Question.
Question called Counsel McGinnis. Let's try with the microphone unmuted, please.
Sorry, yea.
I cannot wait to meet in person. Counsel for Gier?
Yea.
Thorburn?
Yea.
Counsel Donald?
Yea.
Counsel Graves?
Yea.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
In favor, thank you. Motion is carried. Please keep us posted, Greg, on how that meeting goes and what else we can do to support this going forward. Our next item under business arising unfinished business is amendment to policy 60, appointment of deputy mayor. So for the public wondering what this is, every year we, we vote on the deputy mayor and every year we ask the same question, which is, don't we do this every other year instead? And so we're finally, and I think that this goes back to certainly my first time on council. I think I remember asking this and Counsel McGinnis probably remembers asking this a couple of decades ago, don't we do this every other year? So now we're changing it to do it every other year. I think it always takes the first year to understand what the role is. So are there any, any questions before I ask for the motion? No, someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel for Gier.
Yes, the town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the amended appointment of deputy mayor policy as presented in document 20-104 to change from an annual election to a biannual election as policy 60 for the town effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Seconded by.
Counsel McGinnis. Any further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. Counsel McGinnis?
Yea.
Counsel for Gier?
Yea.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yea.
Counsel McDonald?
Yea.
Counsel Graves?
Yea.
Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
I'm in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. And our last item coming under new business is the Parkview graduation recognition event, which is this Thursday, unless it's raining, then it's Friday. And so a parent group put together a plan and a budget and have been working really hard with Kent over at the LCLC to put this, to put this on. And so this request for $1,500 is before us. Counsel for Gier, is he have your hand up?
Yes, I'd like to declare conflict of interest as I have Parkview grad this year.
You don't, you're not technically in conflict because you're not directly benefiting and your, your family's not directly benefiting from this.
Right.
So it's whatever you're comfortable with?
Yeah, that's what I feel comfortable with.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. You ready for a motion? I am ready for the motion, yes.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater award a grant in the amount of 1,500 to the Parkview Education Center Parent Group as a town's contribution towards community graduation celebration to be held June 25th, 2020, and that council provide its general support for the graduation celebration event as required by public health directives.
Thank you. Seconded by?
Seconded by.
Okay, thank you. I think Counsel McGinnis' first. Counsel Graves, you have your hand up? You're muted, Counsel Graves.
Like the first group, was there money, did this group raise money for graduation? Are there funds available for graduation?
So I can just speak as a, as a parent, that money was refunded by the school. A portion of the money that was collected for an end-of-year event was mailed from the school directly to, to parents. So they lessed the yearbook money and I think the cap and gown money. So for example, I got a check for $30 back from the school. So unlike the French school where that money hasn't returned, this money was returned to the parents.
So why aren't the parents paying for the graduation like they have done in the past?
That's a good question. This, a parent group took this on and wanted to make sure something happened. No request was made of parents, as far as I know.
Just, just a quick comment on that. I know they were struggling somewhat, trying to get in touch because they're not allowed to access the students' accounts directly, well, not allowed to mass email through the school board and so on directly, through the school directly. So my guess is that they were struggling to get in touch with all of those parents and therefore perhaps collect a, you know, a donation or whatever the case may be to, to fund the event. That might have been their stumbling block with the short notice. I don't know, just a guess.
Yeah, Counsel McGinnis here. Yeah, I would, I would, I would tend to support the motion. This has been a very difficult year and I'm not going to quibble over the amount of money. I agree with Mike, maybe the parents should be contributing some, but at this point in time, I think we should contribute that amount on my.
Counsel McDonald?
Just with a lot of parents out of work at the moment, struggling, they've probably put out money on prom dresses and tuxes and, you know, all kinds of other expenses that they won't see back. I think it's really important for the town to get behind these grads and support them and make sure that they have something special where their parents may not be able to provide that right now. Or if the funds weren't available, they wouldn't be able to pull it together fast enough. I think these, these grads have lost an awful lot of special memories. And if we can put a few dollars in the pot and make sure that they have something special to leave with, I think that's really important for them.
Thank you. I want to again thank, I think a lot of people in the public know that Kent Walsh is the, I'm going to say the new manager of the LCLC, but he's been there, Deputy Mayor Tanner, freshman member when he started, January, February?
Yeah, January, February.
The time, time has no meaning anymore. We're in week 7,000 of COVID or whatever it is. But there's a couple of things happening for grads this week at the LCLC. And I just want to, I said it in my Facebook post today, I want to, I want to applaud Kent. He just jumped in with both feet, whatever he could do, logistics he's worked on, facility, all the preparations. So he's, he's really, he's really stepped up for this. And so I don't want to, we have to thank, of course, the parent volunteers for all the schools that are trying to, across the province, who are trying to put on an event for their, for their community. But I also don't want to miss the LCLC staff and especially Kent, who's leading that. Further discussion?
You want to motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would move that town council of the town of Bridgewater grant, award a grant in the amount of $1,500 to the Parkview Educational Center Parent Group as a town's contribution towards a community graduation celebration to be held on June 25th, 2020, that council provide its general support for the graduation celebration event as required by the public health directives.
Seconded by?
Excuse me, Mayor Mitchell. This motion has already been brought forward. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Tanner and seconded by Counselor McGinnis.
Oh, thank you.
That's your thought.
They lost track of time.
So, that's your question.
Does require a vote.
Yes, okay, thank you. We'll do the vote now. And I want to also thank the four other municipalities for contributing to this event as well. Counsel McGinnis, hear nay?
Yea.
Counsel Thorburn?
Yea.
Counsel McDonald?
Yea.
Counsel Graves?
Yea.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yea.
Apparently read the motion. And myself, I'm in favor. Motion is carried, thank you. That was our last item. We have no in-camera items after this, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Thorburn, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Nobody else wants to leave, okay? We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thanks.
Good night.